Thank you for watching HCKT TV. Make sure you come visit Harlan County, Kentucky. Roam around, look at some of the beautiful sights such as the Cole Monument. While you're here, shop around local stores and vendors. Make sure you contact Cassandra Wolf and get you some little trinkets and jewelry that she hand makes. And then you need to ride on up to Everts. Make sure you come up to the Everts Off-Road Park, Black Mountain Off-Road Adventure Area. Make sure you ride the trails and see all the beautiful sights they are to see. The wonderful waterfalls, the animals. Who knows, you might even see a beautiful rainbow. Now, this is the schedule for 2025, so come ride. And while you're in Everts, make sure you stay at Black Mountain Cabins and Campers. And if you tear your ATV up, Charlie Austin at Austin's ATV, he can fix it. So kick back, get your popcorn, and let's enjoy another video brought to you by HCKT TV. What is going on, everybody? I do not know why I didn't get the half, second half of the, of the public meeting tonight. It was recording, my phone said it was. I don't know if it got hot, I don't know what happened, but when I got home, there's nothing there. Anyway, I did ask the question about the ATVs being able to ride. It didn't get recorded, but I did reach out to the mayor. And I can show you proof that Everts is not targeting ATVs. Plus, ATVs don't even fall in that new law. It's the big rock crawlers, the big side-by-sides. Those vehicles have to be tagged and all that, not a small ATV. As long as you ride right, got your helmet, follow the rules, you ain't drinking and driving, being stupid, you can come to Everts and ride, plain and simple. Everts has its own ordinance on ATVs. Anyway, guys, here's the meeting. They was gonna raise taxes, but they settled it, they didn't. It was a pretty heated discussion what I got there. I hope you enjoy. Make sure you subscribe.
You guys ready to get started? I tell y'all, I kinda miss the lawberry. We'll get back over to next month. Where I like that a bird, off spacer. Before we get started tonight, Woody, you try to lead us into work first.
Sir, Lord, we thank you for your love and your mercy, thank you for dying for us in salvation. Ask God to help us lead us and guide us, Lord, just, uh, just in city business and, and all we do in life. And we appreciate you being so good to us, as you guide our footsteps. Thank you for all that you've done, in your name we pray.
Voice is weak, but I'll try to speak it for you for everybody. City of Everts, City Campus Meeting, today Tuesday, August twenty-sixth, is where we call for order. As usual, first thing on order, GM isn't gonna be the financial reporter.
You had your, uh, cash balances in there. Of course, we started a new fiscal year, uh, this was the first month of our twenty-sixth fiscal year. Started off a little rocky, as you can see in the cash balances. Uh, the general fund ended the month in a negative balance of five thousand thirty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents. Home Savers had a negative balance of twenty-four thirty-one ten. Fires showed seven thousand two hundred twenty-one dollars and thirty-five cents to the good. Police, drug, two hundred fifty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents. Uh, street fund, four hundred and seventy-four dollars fourteen cents. Recreation, one thousand one hundred fourteen dollars and sixty-seven cents. Garbage fund, fourteen thousand two hundred fifty-three dollars and sixty cents. Cops for Kids, seven hundred ninety-two dollars and forty-six cents. Tourism, fourteen ninety-one forty-eight. Sanitation, uh, two thousand six hundred twenty-three dollars and twenty-six cents. Sewer operations, ten thousand seven hundred thirty-four dollars and forty-three cents. Appreciation Reserve had fifty dollars in it. Water operations had ninety-three thousand one hundred seventy-two dollars and eighty-five cents. The American Relief Act had seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents. The bond fund had five thousand one hundred three dollars and fifteen, uh, thirteen cents. Uh, water deposit had a hundred fourteen thousand six hundred thirty-two dollars and fifty-one cents. KIA, a hundred dollars. And the credit card account had three thousand five hundred sixteen dollars and fifty cents. For the first month of the fiscal year, uh, the general fund brought in eight thou- Eight thousand eight hundred sixteen dollars and eighty-six cents. It spent twenty-three thousand four hundred twenty dollars and thirty-eight cents. So it started the fiscal year, uh, overspending fourteen thousand six hundred three dollars and fifty-two cents. The expenses that, uh, that were made are on your list. Be sure to keep in mind the, the general fund, cause we've got some stuff to discuss later that will be, uh, attributed to that general fund here. If you manage to charge, we'll have to take some decisions on them. Uh, the sanitation brought in eleven thousand one hundred thirty-one dollars and ninety-three cents. Expended ten thousand thirty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents. Brought in a thousand ninety-two dollars and fifty-eight cents more than it expended for the month. And then there was just the one check for the, for the month on, on that one. Uh, the sewer brought in fifteen thousand five hundred seventy-four dollars and thirty-eight cents. It expended eight thousand seven hundred sixty-six dollars and thirty-five cents. It brought in six thousand eight hundred eight dollars and three cents more than it expended. Your expenses follow that. And then your water fund brought in ninety-two thousand three hundred two dollars and thirty cents. It expended twenty-eight thousand three hundred seventy-three dollars and ninety-seven cents. Uh, I'm sorry, sixty-three thousand nine hundred twenty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. It brought in twenty-eight thousand three hundred seventy-three dollars and ninety-seven cents more than it expended for the month. And your expenses follow that.
Everybody had enough time to look over it for you? If you didn't motion accept the financial report? Larry made the motion, price to say, cause everybody did play it. If you got any questions about anything, always can I ask? You said somebody in the kitchen, yeah. All right, next, we're gonna move on to the two thousand twenty-five tax ordinance.
And this was what I was alluding to whenever I said, remember your general fund balance. Uh, of course, every year we look at the, uh, the upcoming property tax rate. Uh, and it's time to look over that. Of course, last year, our rate was point four one five. Uh, and we basically have, uh, just a couple of options. You can leave it at point four one five, or we can do the compensating rate, which is a four percent increase based on the increases in, uh, all the revenue. There, there's computation, you can kinda see that computation that, that, that's done. But just to give you, uh, a, a little bit of an idea, uh, if we go with the, uh, four one five, uh, again, uh, the total property tax base for the city of Everts would be sixty-nine thousand, uh, no, I'm sorry, be seventy thousand one hundred dollars. That's all, if you brought in a hundred percent of your property tax, you'd, you'd have seventy thousand dollars. So, so that's keeping it, uh, the same. If we take the compensating rate of point four three zero, you're only gonna raise and get an additional five thousand six hundred twenty-one dollars. Uh, so it'd be seventy-five thousand dollars that, that you would be receiving. Uh, now, I'm gonna recommend, uh, because if you look at the last few years where general fund has been and where general fund is going, it continues to dip down. Uh, I don't like raising taxes, uh, don't like raising water rates, don't like raising anything. I'm always the bearer of bad news. But if we don't do something, then it's gonna just continue to get worse and worse. Uh, you know, right now, uh, you are at a negative five thousand, uh, in, in the bank. There's a couple things that, that we're doing to, to fix that. Uh, but, you know, it's tight, and, and that, that's the main thing. So I believe that this is an opportunity that you really need to consider going with the, uh, four one three, or the four, uh, the four three. You know, it's only gonna up, uh, a point zero one five percent. So it's not like it's a huge, huge property tax increase.
What are you talking about, seventy-five thousand? Is that what we're talking about?
You would get a total of, uh, you, at point four three, you would get a total of about seventy-five thousand, yes.
If we collect them all?
If, if you collected everything, and you don't collect everything. You know, it, it, you're, you're lucky if you collect ninety-two percent. Most time, it's probably in the mid-eights.
Well, if you don't meet the balance, you don't have it.
I, I understand, I, I, I understand.
I can't go.
But just know that if-
There gotta be somewhere, there gotta be some other way besides raising taxes, Troy, gotta be.
There is, cut services.
No, I don't think so.
Uh, I, 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 well, I see the numbers.
I know what you mean. But I can't see raising taxes, but now, I'm just speaking for me.
Right. I, I don't, I don't like them either, I wouldn't wanna pay you anything.
I hate it, I hate it, just as sure as my opinion is what it is.
I, I understand.
That's why I should think about going with it, that would free up a lot of money for the police.
That's why, that's why, sorry, buddy.
It's okay.
That's why I feel the way I feel.
Understand? And, and don't get me wrong, I don't like getting up here and recommending raising taxes. But I would be, uh, remiss of doing my job if I don't get up here and tell you the truth and give you the honest numbers and the honest answers. And then, that, that's why the good citizens of Everts, uh, go through and-
And then we start to raise taxes, Troy, you start, I mean, the tax comes around, you start raising, want to raise taxes. And I'm sorry, I just, I just don't see it. Uh, we're talking about right now, it's seventy, and just a point rate. And we're talking, gotta be someone to give that, I feel, I feel that personally. Now, that's it, I'm just talking about, it's my opinion.
You know, that, that's the bad, the bad thing about being in government, is the only way to get money is through taxes. And that's the bad thing about being in government.
And what, what happens a lot of times is if you don't do that little small raise that they, compensating rate stuff they do, you end up in ten years, you ain't raised it at all, and then it goes from, uh, it goes to a lot, and people really don't fit, you know? That, that's why they try to do it that little increment, cause stuff just costs more, I mean, it's just- I ain't, ain't nobody's, I'm just saying, that's, that's, but that happens a lot.
I know what you're saying, man.
Yeah, I mean, that's just how, I watched it.
I don't know exactly where you're coming from.
Yeah, I watched it coming for all the years when I was in the attorney, but they wouldn't do it, they just, and then they raised everything.
Talking about a very little bit here, that could come somewhere else.
If you get federal monies, how easy for the, for them to come in and take over a water plant or a sewage plant or whatever, if you're not doing it right?
Probably not easy, but they can, but-
I don't think they're talking better like that, water sewer, RV and stuff seem to be doing okay.
Yeah, I think, I think when you raise those, that, that, you're in great shape there.
Your general fund is only funded by your taxes, your insurance taxes, which is by your public, your, uh, Kentucky utility franchise taxes, again, by your public. And that's the three things that you can maintain or raise to continue funding your general fund. Your general fund funds your police department, your office in here, your fire department. So when you can't fund your general fund, you have to make cuts. We've already cut one police officer, and he was a part-time guy. We're probably gonna have to cut another part-time guy, so that's gonna put you all back down to, which cuts your services. The next thing that's gonna be cut is gonna be over at your fire department. You all have about ten trucks. You can't keep putting gas in those trucks at the rate you all are going. You can't keep providing insurance at the rate you all are going with the funding that you all have coming in. This is reality, guys, I mean, Troy is your bad guy for saying, we need to raise rates on your taxes. Well, we don't have to raise rates on your taxes, but we'll have to cut services. So let's start choosing what services to cut. Cut somebody out of the office, cut you another police officer, start cutting back on your fire trucks. There's your options, that's where we find it at, so where do you want it?
We've got ten fire trucks, you say?
Cleto, how many you got in service right now? Fire trucks, pumpers, everything?
Four.
Four, so he's got four, including his pumpers. I'm sorry, he's got four, I just feel like we got more than that, cause there's a big long list on our insurance. But regardless, that's still insurance and gas. And the same thing for your police cruisers, you got four.
All that stuff costs more, I mean, it just goes up.
So I mean, that's what you're looking at. So you either got property tax, insurance tax, and franchise fees that have to go up, or you gotta start cutting services. That's the only way you're gonna be able to provide for that general fund, guys.
Well, we only, as councilmembers, once a month, see what we see and know what we know, whatever, but-
Yes.
Mayor and you, for the next upcoming year, do you foresee anything that looks like we may be better off in a year from now?
No. We've gotten worse in the past-
In order to avoid raising taxes?
We've gotten worse in the past five years, because Troy and I have both been sitting here saying, guys, you need to go up a little bit, you need to go up a little bit. We've not went up in anything, and every year that general fund continues to go down more and more, and it's going down quicker.
Would it be that we're spending more than we probably are taking?
We're not spending more as in what we shouldn't, though we're spending more because products have went up. Your gas has went up, the things that the police department has to have, because when they get audited, they're, you know, the, Kentucky League of Cities, as well as the Academy says, okay, guys, you have to have this, you have to have this, you have to have that. Same thing with the fire department, you know, Cleto gets audited, they tell him he has to have certain things, which fortunately, he gets stay day for most of his stuff. You know, and the, and the police department just does not. And yeah, of course, you got that insurance going up like crazy, which we try to pay for the majority of the city vehicles out on water, but you can't pay for those cruisers out of water, absolutely cannot.
And you can stand outside here and do a three sixty turn around, and then you just look at our tax base.
Yeah. And the majority of them now are on homestead. We've lost a lot to homestead, so those people that we are trying to prevent from paying taxes are no longer paying taxes, guys, it's people like me and Cleto and Woody and BJ that are paying these taxes now. It's not the little lady down the street, cause they're homesteading. And then you have to look at our streets that we're no longer being able to fund. Am I right about that?
She's right, you guys know how I feel about taxes, I never raised them.
I don't wanna raise them either.
I'm like Ernie when it comes to taxes, and I always keep trying to figure out a way to cut, cut, and cut. If you all tell us that that's what you want me to do, is keep cutting, I'll keep cutting.
I mean, we, we do, we cut everything we can cut, constantly.
Just one thing to keep in mind, that this raise is a progressive raise, whenever you, whenever you think about it. We haven't raised it in ten years, all right? So-
No, it didn't look good the last ten years.
That, that's right, but if, if you'd raised a little bit ten years ago, that'd been four thousand dollars that year.
But I'm saying-
And then another four thousand, so over ten years, your, your bank, your bank account would be about forty thousand to the good had you kept your spending the same and everything, and just had that little bit of raise every year. And so that's just something that you have to think about, you know? And as I said, I don't, I, I don't like standing up here being the bad guy, cause that, but that's what you pay me to do. You pay me to stand up here and tell you my thoughts on the finances. And the finances on, on the general fund are very tight right now. And what, what happened whenever we got in water this past, uh, spring? That, that wasn't a point zero one five percent raise.
No.
That was a point three zero percent raise, and that was a thirty percent raise. And that, that's not just a little easy easing into it, this at least is easing into it. And, but as I said, I just wanted to give you the, the food for thought and let y'all do what the, the fine citizens of Everts have elected you to do, and that's to govern them, and-
Well, I think we're doing it.
You, you are?
You can standard make that statement, but what the good citizens of Everts hardest for, I think that's what we're doing here every month.
And I wasn't, I, I wasn't, I was not, I, I was not-
This raise is, I hope-
What is the bottom line?
I hope it don't create a job loss for somebody in the city.
How much would we have to raise it, or what, how much can we get away?
Well, you got a couple of options, you know? You know, I've always been the guy that's, I sort of told you guys, I'm gonna cut, I'm gonna cut, I'm gonna cut, because I try to cut spending in order to raise taxes, and that's what we've always been able to do. But, uh, and I'll do whatever y'all tell me to do, because at the end of the day, you know, you all, you know, you all make the rules, and I, I make them, I do them. But I, I, I'm, I don't like raising taxes, and I, I don't have a vote in this, I have a say-so to tell you how I feel, but I don't have a vote in it, I, 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 I just don't like raising taxes. I like to be able to, but I know money's tight, and that means we're gonna make cuts. If that's what I need to do, it's what we'll do.
I know raising taxes is in the county.
Yeah.
Now, versus city used to be, I just would hope that some way the county could enforce the rules, regulations, and put more pressure that, he, and, and, for instance, maybe ninety-nine two percent might be what he elects or something of right now. But I'd like to see him be able to do something other, force people to pay their taxes, that way he may be better off without having to raise taxes.
No, you mentioned a minute ago, I wish I had a crystal ball to tell you guys, that would make it better. And of course, I've got ideas, you know, we need, you know, at some point in time, you got a couple of options. Either leave the tax rates like they are, and we try to find more ways to cut, or you raise them, and we're still gonna have to find more ways to cut, because that little five thousand dollars, to me, ain't gonna make that much of a difference. Or we try to find a new tax base, you know, and there, there are other options out there, but the cities, small municipalities are going under, because sometimes we don't look outside the box at certain things to help us with our tax base. Uh, I wish I could tell you, you know, what would be the best thing to do. Y'all, y'all know how I feel about taxes, and I, I'm, I'm- Well, me- I'm not like, I mean, I'm, I'm like Ernie, you know, I just never believed in raising taxes. Me having to show them my experience here at this meeting, which I don't, I don't do that, and I'm sorry if I have, Troy. But the thing of it is, I'm just one councilmember, and I'll go along with my fellow councilmembers, however they decide, that's, that's, that's about what we'll do.
That's the great thing about this, this country, is we can say it, discuss it, and be adamant about it, and be passionate. And you, and I, I, I understand, I agree with you. I don't like being the bad guy, to get up here and, and present the bad side of it, but, you know?
Well, I know this one race, stuff we had to go up with, sometime back and all that and everything, and that's one set. And then it just keeps going, I don't know, my God.
But it's, it's the same thing they're saying with water, if y'all, if y'all raised the water just a little bit at a time for the last fifteen years, people wouldn't have been that mad about it, you know? I mean, that's what, and that's the same thing you're in there, it's just that, if you, if you wait ten years, and, and it goes huge, it just hurts you.
Lord, we as a city, uh, we're, we're having to pay county taxes, as well as our city taxes.
Yeah.
And we're just a small town, and I'd love to see it some way, somewhere, where we can get the money that this town needs to provide a service. And I, I, for one-
Bring the taxes back and stop giving that money to the sheriff, that's more money you're gonna have in your pocket.
How do we do that?
Tell them you no longer want the sheriff to collect it, and we'll bail it out ourselves, and we'll start collecting it.
But you need to look at your collection rate, the previous comparative collection rate of what you got right now.
That's right, because you gotta look at something, guys, they, they are collecting it. They are sending out delinquents, but there's you something to bring it back home if you wanna try it for one year.
I know.
And let Ronnie start doing the link ones.
Man, it's a lot of trouble, because it's, it's hard, it's hard to collect.
We gotta be in him a raid.
It's just hard, it's, it's hard to do those for just, for just one tax bill.
That's where you get it.
Well, we, we, we discussed it now, and you all know the options, we do this every year. We've got a couple of options, we either leave it the same, somebody make a motion, leave it the same, or somebody can make a motion to raise it, and we'll see where it goes from there, that's about the best one we can do, guys. I'm making a motion, leave it the same. Larry's made a motion, leave it the same. Or Ernie, I'm sorry, Jackie's thinking, that means it goes for a vote. So I'm gonna go around the table, cause this is pretty important, so Jackie, leave it the same, Larry?
Same for me, I guess.
Ernie, leave it the same, Charlie?
Same.
Preston?
Same.
So we have it, tax base will stay the same, and that's how you get things done, I appreciate everybody's input. And we'll look at ways, you know, me and Troy and Chris are to go with drop one, but look to waste, make some cuts, unless we can find another tax base somewhere, and that may be something we need to look at, you know?
But it's gonna be, the citizens is gonna pay whatever it is we bring to you all's table, just so you all know that. Yeah, I have to read that.
So is this something we can look at later?
No, this has to be done tonight, and we gotta do a second reading, like-
And after, or say it, and they may change or back away to next year?
Next year, because I have to get this to the clerk this week. Yeah, so we'll have to- Yeah, so we'll have to have a second reading, uh, I need to know when you all can do a second reading.
I'm gonna do it Thursday night, if you don't have a screen.
It won't even be in town. It's gonna be down by Friday. So, I guess Thursday I'll have to do that?
Wednesday, can't do it tomorrow, gotta do it Thursday.
Yeah, it'll have to be Thursday. Five thirty, five thirty.
Five thirty, Thursday night, okay, do second reading.
What day?
Thursday night.
Thursday, five thirty.
No, there's something out in our mind, Troy is right.
Troy is right.
That's where it needs to be, yes. Um, I just would like to see something more positive that, that we wouldn't have to do that shit.
Alright, I'm gonna get this ready up quick, guys. Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero eight, an ordinance levy in the annual real property intangible tax for city purposes and corporate limits of Evers, Kentucky. Whereas Kentucky revised statute, KRS, ninety-two point two eight zero, requires that the legislative body of each city annually levy and add a room tax for city purposes. Whereas KRS, ninety-two point three three zero, requires that all taxes be levied. By ordinance, whereas KRS eighty-three A point one three zero, requires that the legislative body by ordinance provide for sufficient revenue to operate city government. Whereas the city has calculated the tax rates for real intangible property in accordance with KRS, chapter one thirty-two. Now therefore, be ordained by the city of Evers, Kentucky as follows, section one tax levy. Real estate and tangible property, the tax rate of point four one five cent on each one hundred dollars assessed value of real property, subject to taxation under the laws of the state of Kentucky, is hereby levied for city purposes. A tax rate of point four one five cent on each one hundred dollar assessed value of tangible property, subject to taxation under the laws of the state of Kentucky, is hereby levied for city purposes. Section two, effective date and use thereof. This ordinance applies to the two thousand twenty-five calendar year. Tax assessment and all receipts shall be used for city purposes and accounted for in the two thousand twenty-six fiscal year and subsequent fiscal years in reference to delinquent collections. Date of first reading is August twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-five. I'm gonna have a second reading on Thursday.
Can you get a motion to accept a first reading and a tax reading? Larry's made a motion. Troy's taken, is everybody good there? We'll come back and get the second reading done Thursday night, and that will set our tax rate for this year. Which should, should make everybody pretty happy, I think.
I wanna thank y'all for watching, if you haven't subscribed, please do so. And God bless you all, and I'll see you guys on the next video. And I do apologize about not getting that second half, I've got to figure out what's going on with these phones.